The special meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. All in favor? Please are adjourned. Motion passes nine zero. Calling to order, the regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education, June ninth. The time is seven forty-five. Members of the public, my name is Christine Battalini. I'm the Chair of the Board of Education. We are joining you tonight via WebEx. There will be no live public comment during this meeting, but we invite the public to leave public comment on agenda items by emailing publiccomments@fairfieldschools.org. I'm going to call to order. Present, we have Ms. Jacobson.
Door by door. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Leeper, Ms. Tidco, Mrs. Rattelli, Mrs. Max McInally, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson. We're joined tonight. Did I miss anybody? We're joined tonight by Superintendent Cummings, our Headmasters and our Executive Directors. I will ask you all to please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sorry that we had a late start today. We'll be moving right along to agenda items. For public comment, as I was saying, you can leave public comments by emailing us at publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org. There's also a form on the Board of Ed website. You can leave your comment there. Public comments will be verified and will be included with our meeting business. Moving on to student recognition, cave and superintendent awards for senior recipients. If we were back in school buildings, we typically have our award ceremonies in May. It's a very festive way to end the year. We invite our families and our students who are recognized, and we recognize them publicly. We are holding off on that ceremony. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet together in the fall, but we did want to recognize our senior recipients. So with that, I will leave it to Mr. Cummings to give us some more information about that, and we welcome those families and are happy that you're with us here tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Battalini. Good evening, everyone. It is my honor tonight to present both the Cave Senior Awards as well as the Superintendent Awards. I'll say a little bit about each award category before we begin to introduce the students. Again, I want to thank them and their families for attending tonight. I'm going to read, Mr. Hattis, I think, had connectivity issues tonight, so I'm going to read the Fairfield Lolo and Walter Fitzgerald vials of the award recipients this evening, and then Mr. Cavanna will read the award recipients. So our first award category tonight is the Cave Senior Awards. The Cave Student Leadership Award is presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and the criteria for selection is based on exemplary leadership skills. So first off, Natalie, are you on the line? I just want to make sure, Natalie, that I'm saying your last name right, and I apologize. But I have Natalie Sturekowek. Natalie is a motivated, focused leader. Natalie is an independent student who gets along with everyone she meets. Everything she has accomplished is because of her grit and her work. Natalie has been successful at Lolo because she isn't afraid to ask questions or take on new challenges. She transferred to Fairfield at the beginning of her freshman year and made an immediate impact. She was named Vice President of her class and held the position for four years. Natalie is President of the English Honor Society, is a member of the Lolo Leaders, the Falcon Council, and the Fairfield Town Youth Council. Natalie was even certified in peer connection so that she can become a better resource to her peers. It is important for her to work with people and find ways to make a difference. Her approachable, tenacious personality will serve her well in college.
Mr. Cummings, I was able to join unless you're done with Lolo now.
Oh, Mr. Hattis. Okay, terrific, great. We welcome you, and if you want to speak, I just spoke to Natalie, but if you want to speak, take.
That would be great. Thank you so much. Sorry to those who are on this, it's a major technical difficulty tonight, but. All right, so.
Jake? Yes.
As a dynamic class president, Jake Banker kept all seniors in the know with all events with his immense social media presence. Even I was using Jake to get a message out to seniors during quarantine. Jake's planning and leadership kept class morale at the highest it can be despite the hurdles and disappointments they have experienced. Jake is a very well-rounded student, playing in orchestra for four years, participated in some drama productions, helped manage our student-run restaurant, was a member of our school's GSA club. Jake was also involved with athletics, running for the outdoor track team, and served as one of the captains on our hockey team this year after having played all four years. He is a born leader who always seeks out the best opportunities for those around him.
Congratulations. Okay. Thank you. So congratulations to both Natalie and Jake from Fairfield Lolo High School. And now, Mr. Cavanna, would you speak to the two Cave Senior Award recipients from Fairfield Ward High School?
My pleasure. Tonight, we're going to recognize Abigail Hart and Casey Llewellyn. We'll start with Abigail. Abigail is a responsible, dependable, and mature young woman. She's a member of the Town Youth Council, Key Club, and two Honor Societies in math and social studies. Abby understands the need to help others, just as important as her ability to put herself in other people's shoes. Being a long-distance runner on the cross-country and track team allows her to see the big picture and understand what it takes over time to get what she wants. She's a strong student, challenges herself with difficult courses every year, and has developed a strong, steady approach to her studies, like in her running. Abby is a leader, the captain of the track team, and one of the most respected among her classmates. She's become a strong communicator and appreciates, and is appreciated as a captain. She's able to shape the team's dynamic and instill a family atmosphere on the team. I am proud to recognize Abigail Hart as one of the 2002 Cave Award winners from Fairfield Ward High School.
Congratulations.
In addition, I'm going to now speak on Casey Llewellyn. Casey has demonstrated herself to be a natural-born leader who is dedicated to consistently improving herself. Not only has Casey provided provenness in the classroom where her transcript speaks for herself, and she also has done this, and with her ability to grow, ultimately achieving entrance into the National Honor Society, but also as a captain of the Fairfield Ward field hockey team, and as a senior. Casey is a positive agent of change, and she's a person who makes her environment better for all. She has demonstrated this through her commitment to her community service, in which she was involved with Six for Soldiers, our interact club, and service to a trip to Uganda. We are so proud of her and all her achievements. Please, a round of applause for Casey Llewellyn.
Congratulations to all of you.
With any, before we move on to the Superintendent Student Recognition Award, do any board members make a comment? Or on behalf of the Board, am I extending our congratulations to Natalie J. Cassi Abigail? Okay, just for the public, board members are all, they're muted, but they are giving thumbs up and giving you a round of applause. Again, we wish that we could be here in person. So moving on to the Superintendent Student Recognition Award, Mr. Cummings?
Yep, the Superintendent Recognition Award is presented annually in conjunction with the Connecticut Association of Public Schools Superintendents. Criteria for selection is based on community service, academic prowess, and leadership in the school community. And our first recipient tonight is Alexander Malone. Alexander represents the Fairfield High School Walter Fitzgerald campus. The word journey is defined as, quote, "the act of traveling from one place to another." Alex Malone is a student who started with us at Walter Fitzgerald in one place and is ending his Walter Fitzgerald journey in a completely new and different place. Over the years, we have watched Alex overcome obstacles to transform into a responsible and quite impressive adult. In his time at Walter Fitzgerald, Alex has exhibited integrity, responsibility, and respect in his academics and otherwise. Alex has become one of the most independent students we've ever encountered. The most impressive thing about Alex is that he has managed to take responsibility for completing his education while simultaneously building a lucrative career for himself. For all his reasons, Alex is most deserving of this award. And Alex was not able to be with us tonight, but we want to extend our congratulations to him and to his family. Back to Mr. Hattis, your turn again with Fairfield Lolo.
Okay. Our first recipient tonight is Mr. James Flink. To describe James, or Jamie, as many know him, as anything less than exceptional would be interesting. He's a passionate, articulate, and intelligent young man who was captain of the baseball team, president of the Unified Sports Club, and co-president of the National English Honor Society. He was also a member of the Science, Spanish, Math Studies, and National Honor Societies. He was also the senior class president. And finally, last but not least, he is our Class of 2020 valedictorian. He has also received numerous accolades such as Most Inspirational Player on his baseball team or other Scholar-Athletes Awards. He, in middle school, had committed to serving in the United States Armed Forces, exemplifying his deep sense of spurs to others, his community, and to our country. Jamie has been appointed to attend the United States Military Academy at West Point in the fall. Okay, are we all through, Cummings, or should I just go through the three recipients?
You can keep going there, Mr. Hattis.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next recipient is Mr. Shalen Smith from Wright House, who is an intelligent, feminine, and inquisitive young man. Shalen picks up on new concepts very fast, and he loves sharing what he has learned with others. Shalen is our school's salutatorian, and was National Honor Society's 2020 winner. When she completed all of Lolo's math courses in junior year, he decided to take linear algebra course online to continue his studies. Shalen was the president of the Mu Alpha Theta Math Honor Society and captain of our competitive math team, helping the Falcons to qualify for the state match for the first time in seven years. He is Lolo's sole qualifier for the American Invitational Math Match Exam, and he's worked as a math tutor at Mathnasium. He is also a member of the tennis team and a musician in our symphonic orchestra. Shalen has been playing the piano independently for eleven years, and he also completes regularly in chess. And last but not least, we have Lila Denny, who is a familiar face to many of you, serving as a student representative to the Board of Education this past year. Inspired by her AP US Government class last year, Lila volunteered with the Get Out the Vote campaign, where she sent out postcards encouraging young people to register to vote. Additionally, Lila played lacrosse for two years and has speeded on our women's varsity team all four years at Fairfield Lolo High School, helping lead them to state championships each year. She's had a lot of time in front of the Board of Education. She's a member of the B Cause Club and is President of the Appalachia Service Project Club at Fairfield Lolo High School. She participates in the yearly service to Appalachia with church, serving as a mentor and overseeing groups of her peers. She is a member of the National and Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society and a Lolo leader mentoring underclass. Congratulations, Lila.
Thank you, Mr. Hattis. It's just wonderful. Thank you, and congratulations to all the students from Fairfield Lolo High School. Mr. Cavanna?
Yes, tonight, I'm proud to illuminate the Fairfield Ward Superintendent Award winners in Claire Schneisky, Austin A.J. Hutchinson, and Megan Logeness. Claire, the proud member of the Fitz House, she represents everything we hope a student at Ward to be. She's remarkable academically, compiling a 4.67 GPA while taking eight AP courses. She's heavily involved in our National Honor Society and the Math and Social Studies Honor Society, both as a varsity girls soccer and lacrosse player. She serves our community through volunteering at the Catwalk for Cure and the Humanity Now, while also tutoring elementary students and working at Mathnasium. But most importantly, she's a great person. When asked to describe Claire, faculty says she's kind, thoughtful, empathetic, creative, genuine, diligent, and inspirational. On behalf of the entire Ward family, Fitz House, and myself, we'd like to congratulate Claire for being one of the 2002 Ward Superintendent Award winners. Please, a round of applause for Claire.
Austin Hutchinson, A.J., is a proud member of Peacock House. He is a competent, dedicated, and courageous young man. A.J. stands out among all his peers for a strong moral and perseverance. Academically, A.J.'s transcript speaks for himself. He's a bright young man who works hard and always pushes himself to succeed, and he portrays our school mission of being welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical. A.J. has participated at Ward Athletics through the years. If A.J. is not in school or studying, you'll see him running. A.J. is an avid runner and a member of competitive cross-country indoor and outdoor track teams. His strength, perseverance, and positivity are remarkable. Please, a round of applause for A.J.
Last, but certainly not least, I am proud to announce Megan Logeness. Megan is a proud member of Town House. She is a student whose intellect, determination, and caring is portrayed by the way she exemplifies the Ward acronym of being welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical. She has earned a 4.2 GPA and has participated in several challenging classes, including AP Biology, AP Statistics, AP Language Composition, AP Physics, AP Calculus AP, AP Spanish, AP Gov. In addition, during all her free time, she is the captain of the varsity girls soccer team, and she is a captain for the Catwalk for Cure and has completed a certification in nursing, in the nursing program. Megan has demonstrated her leadership quality, not only on the soccer field, but also as a founding member of the Rooms for Rent Organization. This organization raises money to rent two bedrooms annually for underprivileged students. Please join me in recognizing Megan as the last and final 2002 Superintendent Award winner from Ward High School. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cavanna and Mr. Hattis. And on behalf of the Fairfield Public Schools, the staff, and the student body, I just want to extend our congratulations to all the award recipients tonight. As Ms. Battalini said, we truly wish we could do this in person with you, but we wanted to make sure that we recognized you before you went on the next parts of your journey, and we wish you all the best. It's quite inspiring to read these lists of accomplishments, and you know better than we do the great work that your peers are doing as well. So we know that you represent, in many ways, a very talented group of seniors in the Fairfield Public Schools. So thank you again, and we wish you, we really truly wish you all the best going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. On behalf of the Board, I also want to congratulate all the recipients tonight. We wish you well in your next journey. We look forward to hearing what the next chapter brings, and I want to thank you for the many contributions that you have made to your high school communities as well as to the town of Fairfield. We wish you the best of luck, and have fun, enjoying this last week with the Fairfield Public Schools, and we look forward to hearing what your next adventure will bring. So come back and visit us sometime, especially you, Ms. Denny. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you all next week.
Okay, moving on, approval of new high school graduation date and location. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education establish the following. Fairfield Lolo High School will graduate on Tuesday, June sixteenth, at Jennings Beach. Fairfield Ward High School will graduate on Wednesday, June seventeenth, at Jennings Beach, and the rain date for both will be Thursday, June eighteenth, at Jennings Beach. Come motion, Mrs. Max McInally, seconded by Ms. Jacobson. Mr. Cummings, I don't know, or if you want to give it to the Headmasters, just to give us an update on where we are with the graduation plans and why this is before us again.
Really, I will turn over the details to both Mr. Hattis and Mr. Cavanna, who quite honestly have worked endlessly over the past month to make the adjustments. I simply just want to say, on behalf of the Fairfield Public Schools, our deep appreciation and thanks to the students, parents, faculty members who got, were involved with this process with the Headmasters. I think that this represents, the end result really represents the best of the ideas that have come forward, and I appreciate everyone's contributions towards the outcome. I also want to extend, on behalf of the Fairfield Public Schools, our greatest appreciation for the members of the Fairfield Town Government and Departments. First Selectwoman Kupchik, our Chiefs of Fire and Police, Mr. Cleary in the Health Department, our, the DP, Ford's, excuse me, staff in the Department of Public Works, they have met every challenge all along the way and have really extended themselves on behalf of our students. And, you know, this truly is the greatest representation of the town pulling together for a common goal for the, for the best of our kids. So I'll let Mr. Cavanna and Mr. Hattis speak to any more specifics that they're ready to share tonight.
So I'll just, Mike, your list was absolutely true, and I just would also like to throw in former Board Member and now Department of Parks Recreation Chair, Andrew Calabres, who has also been, especially in the use of Jennings Beach as our location and his purview of that place, so it's tremendously helpful. You know, I couldn't say enough how much the town has been helpful with this. Mr. Cavanna and I have been working very closely together, and I think that one thing we are very proud of is that we were able to basically take elements of the two plans that we were originally looking at, whether, you know, from the Lolo side, you know, getting all the students together, and from the Ward side, having the students be able to walk across the stage. Prior to a week ago, we had to choose either one or the other. And now, because of a little loosening of the state guidelines, as well as some guidance and approvals from the town, we are able to create, we think, is the most comprehensive ceremony from any high school that we have seen so far in Fairfield County or anywhere else in Connecticut. So it's been absolutely tremendous, and we are now very lucky to be able to provide the exacting ceremony, both, you know, sets of students. But being that it includes two large screens displaying what is happening on stage, because people would be so spread out in their cars at Jennings Beach, we needed to do it at night. We could not fit both ceremonies in one day, so the proposal to the Board tonight was allowing for each school to do it on two separate nights, both at eight o'clock, so that we can capitalize on the time. We just happen to be lucky that our graduation ceremony is following within the week the longest days of the entire year, so therefore, the late start. But we have been working hard to streamline the ceremony, to try to keep it. It won't be as short as our normal ceremony, unfortunately, but we think that we can keep this into a reasonable time to get folks home in a reasonable time. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, it's just, I'm just so proud to work with the Greg and the town and our graduations committees. You know, we put a lot of time into it, and we're just happy that we're going to be able to honor our seniors. You know, in a two-high school town, you always have a friendly rivalry, but when the stakes are high and we come together, it's just a beautiful thing. So we're just really looking forward to good weather and a great ceremony.
We're all hoping for good weather, and I want to, I want to thank you, Mr. Hattis and Mr. Cavanna, for all of your work on this, and for listening to the community. And I, I've seen some of the plans. I can't imagine the amount of time you must have spent on this. I also want to echo Mr. Cummings' words in thanking our Town Government, our First Selectwomen, our Chief W., Mr. Calabres. The list goes on and on for making this happen, even Mr. Foley. We had an issue this morning about with purchasing in order to get the screens, and, you know, everyone works together. I think that everyone is looking forward to this graduation. We need something to celebrate. If it goes a little bit longer, I'm venturing a guess that people will not be that upset. We spent a lot of time at home. I'm sure that many will be happy to be with their classmates and families, albeit in cars, to celebrate the accomplishments of the last thirteen years in the Fairfield Public Schools, and as I said at the last meeting, just these, these last few months, because we do, we do appreciate that there has been a loss for these students, and, you know, I'm looking forward to celebrating them big time. And with that, I will give it to the Board for any questions or comments before we take it to a vote.
I won't go on and on, but just one second, everything Ms. Battalini just said, and I'm sure it wasn't easy to kind of put aside all the work you had done for the first proposal and revamped, but I think the community really thanks you, and I know that, I do. I just wanted to make sure you guys, or somebody had communicated with the neighbors, so that they are aware of exactly what's happening in their, in their backyard and won't be surprised by a few hundred cars.
We had a planning meeting today, and there was made mention of a code red for the, to the neighborhoods, so that they would, they would know exactly the timeline of events.
And do you know when they'll be getting that notification? Will they get it in advance? Like?
No, I don't. No, they definitely will get it in advance. I just, I wasn't, you know, they were, I think they needed somebody else to discuss somebody else in terms of how that code red would go out before they, before they could finalize that decision, but I know it's on their radar.
Awesome. Thanks a lot.
Hi, Jen Jacobson. I just wanted to also, sorry, to steal the need to say thank you so much as a parent of a senior graduating this year, and I'm a little upset, but just thank you for hanging in for these kids so long, and she did. It's been really difficult with seniors, and I'm just really grateful to you all for hanging in for them. And I just have one question, because I know there's a lot of parents who want to know. I know the doors open at seven, but is there going to be any type of communication possibly about what time people should start queuing up or something? Just because they're probably thinking three hundred people aren't going to go right at seven, so, and that might not be known right now, but just that that's on people's minds of if there's a time or an organized, something like that. But, sorry, I'm upset. Thanks so much.
Now we're all going to start crying.
I know, I'm sorry. Sorry. So the question was about queuing up. I'm sorry, I don't mean to make you upset.
Now we're all, now we're all going to start crying, because we've just, it's been such an emotional journey on this topic, but.
What I, what I can just tell you is that, well, first of all, we recognize that emotion, and I know that, you know, having worked with seniors for many, many years, there really, really is nothing more special than that night, and so it is something that we hold very dearly, our community, and I've been grateful to be experiencing that for a long time now, and I know Paul was really excited to be a part of his first graduation, and I know this will be one to remember. So I will say this about the queuing. We've had to, there's, there's the general plan that everybody knows about, but we've also had to adjust that plan probably about twenty-five times since we published it, believe it or not. We're actually going to be changing the orientation of how, of how people are situated. And I want to also do another shout-out to the Town Engineer, Rihanna Harris, who has been phenomenal in basically redesigning the entire parking lot so that we can fit the cars in a socially-distanced way required by the Board of Health with, you know, space between the cars, in a checkerboard fashion, so that everybody will have good sightlines. She has been tremendous. We just, we thought today finalized what that parking lot would look like, which includes a strategy for queuing, but I need to hold off just another day or two, just to make sure we finalize some details, so it will be coming.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions? Mrs. Gerber?
Yes, thank you again. As the other Board of Ed member with a senior, I really, really appreciate this so much, as does everyone in my family. It just, it means a lot to so many people. And I just wanted to say, too, that when we got the email, when it went out to all the seniors, it was incredible. It was a five-page graduation plan, and this, I mean, I know that so much work went into everything before you actually wrote up that plan, but the fact that you had to put together a five-page plan, which I'm sure, as you already said, you were revising, so. a five-page plan, which I'm sure, as you already said, you were revising, so, um, it truly, there is just the amount of detail, the, the amount of work that obviously went into it, um, you know, I can only begin to imagine the amount of time it took. So, I just so appreciate it. Um, I've heard nothing but fantastic feedback from both Ludlow and Ward senior families, so I think it's going to be great. I already have my FM battery-operated radio ready to go, so, um, and, uh, we're going to decorate the car and everything. So, um, yeah, really looking forward to it and thank you so much to everyone.
Mrs. McCallie?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, just a quick word, um, because obviously I've asked a lot of questions about this in the past and I just want to, I don't like repeating somebody else, but because of my past questions, I did want to say thank you so much for being, uh, so attentive to so many constituents, um, in addressing this, that to echo Mrs. Gerber's point, I've gotten such, it's not just that people are, okay, I think this is the best we could do, there's actually active excitement out there for what this is going to turn out to be. And so, for you to have, I just got goosebumps, for you to have achieved that, not just compliance, but excitement, um, you know, I just, I thank you so much for partnering with all the people that you did.
Any other?
My only que, my only question was asked by Mrs. Gerber, so thank you for taking care of that.
And again, um, on behalf of the board, if there's anything we can do, um, please let us know. I know that, you know, I saw an email looking for volunteers for our junior parents. As a past PTA president, I know that sometimes it can be hard to find volunteers. So, if you need any help, you just let me know, Mr. Asa, um, or a volunteer to direct traffic if need be.
We've got a, uh, we've got a, an army, uh, Parks and Rec folks who are, were on, on call for that night to do that. Um, the one thing I will, I will just say, because I know that we, we have, um, public, the members of the public who, who might be watching tonight, um, it is very critical and, and, and the hardest thing that I think that we are going to try to ask people is to stay in their cars. Um, there will be lots of facilities available and, um, and we know that obviously, uh, when you're beginning to be in a car earlier than ceremony and then sitting through the ceremony and waiting for all of, and it's really hard, but, um, but it, for safety reasons, I know a lot of people are saying, well, we can go to the beach and get out of our cars now, why can't we do it here? And, and the answer really is that because you're all staying in your cars. It's not that you're getting out and going to a big, open, public space, but it's very critical for us to be able to pull this off, that everybody follows the guidelines, um, and read the letter very carefully and we'll be following up with more details, but, um, but that is a critical component here in order for this to be, you know, under the auspices of an approved plan. So, I just thank you for allowing us to, to reiterate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hattis, for that. Um, this plan, you know, we did move forward with a position of trust. Our seniors have been so responsible and, as we've said before, that we, we know that they will rise to the occasion and follow the guidelines put forth to make it a, a memorable and fun event for everyone. Seeing no other hands up, we'll take it to the vote.
Pristine?
All in favor?
Pristine, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jeff, I'm sorry, I don't see you. Go ahead. Can other board members see him?
Video isn't working.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. I'm sorry, Jeff.
All right, I'm, I'm, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to make this work over here. I'm, I'm sorry about that. I, I was just saying that I, I, I didn't want to interrupt the tears with a very mundane question, but I'm going to ask it very quickly. Um, in the, in the budget, the budget, uh, for this year, I believe, lists, uh, the, uh, Ludlow commencement at twenty-four thousand and the Ward commencement at seventeen thousand. I was hoping at some point we could have a look at and see how much this actually is going to wind up costing, um, because I assume it's going to be the same cost for, for both, um, since the, the, you know, we're going to use the Jennings Beach rather than, and, and I guess that the possibility is that we're going to see a savings here.
Um, I'm not sure, um, we, we, we've done everything that we've can to try to stay within the same budgetary, uh, restrictions, but, um, but I can tell you that trying to throw this thing together at this late date, um, in terms of securing vendors for, um, you know, all the different things and also, um, the fact that we are asking vendors to keep things on-site longer also had an impact on the price because, you know, we're basically asking them to not serve other districts for three nights. Um, now, they, they won't charge us if we don't use the rain day, but, um, that's, uh, but that, that was a big factor as well, um, the fact that they, they had to be there for two nights, so.
And the other, uh, the other thing specifically to Ward, you know, we don't, we do our graduation in the courtyard, so we don't, you know, cover money for a stage and, and things like that, so it will be more expensive than, than what we, we normally allocate, but, you know, and I know we all want to be fiscally responsible and that's important, but our seniors have lost so much and we've worked so hard with them through town hall meetings, through committee meetings, that, um, you know, this is just an important event and we're so close to the finish line that we just need to do it, you know, to the best of our ability. So, sometimes, you know, you have to make decisions like that when you're in Greg and I's shoes and we understand it's a taxpayer's money and we need to be respectful of that, but we also understand the responsibility on our seniors.
And I don't want to leave anyone with the impression that I am objecting to this in any way. I think it's an absolute win and, and a, a great thing for the town. I, I just might want an after-action report on costs from the administration.
Mr. Peterson, we'll, we'll have at the next meeting, we'll have an update on the graduation costs for you. Once, you know, by that point, I would hope we'd have all the, uh, the voices in and, and pay, be able to bring that to you.
That, that's, that's all I'm asking for. Thanks so much.
Okay, before we take it to a vote, any other comments? I just want to make sure that I... Miss Pickel, I can't see you. Are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, to the board for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries nine zero. Moving on to summer school update. Uh, Mr. Cummings?
Yep, I, and thank you, Mr. Hattis and Mr. Cavanna, uh, for that, um, for that update. Appreciate it, very much appreciate it. Um, so, summer school update, I'm going to turn to Mr. Mancusi to give an update on, uh, we sent out the communication today to families and to the staff, and I'd ask Mr. Mancusi to give us an update on, uh, particularly the E S Y program and as well as efforts he's making with related services, so. Mr. Mancusi?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay. Um, before I, uh, give you an update, I just wanted to, um, express a sincere apology to our, our special education staff who felt that the way that I worded some of the E S Y language in the letter was indicating that the reason we cannot run a large-scale live in-person, um, E S Y program is because the staff was not willing. That is certainly not the case. We have a hard-working, dedicated, wonderful special education staff who I proudly call colleagues and, um, you know, if I offended anyone or in, made people think the way that my, um, language was written implied, other than we just found it difficult to staff due to the current circumstances under the pandemic with the rules of opening that we were facing. Um, we are not proposing or we did not make this decision because our staff was not willing to work. Um, so if I offended anyone of our staff members, um, from the bottom of my heart, my, my deepest, um, apologies. With that said, um, we are, have come to the, the realization that, um, you know, we're not able to run a large-scale live in-person program. So, we are going to run a learning distance, a distance learning, E S Y program, um, with the proposed dates. There's a four-week program, a six-week program as listed in the letter. What we are trying to do, um, in, in collaboration with the Fairfield Health Department, um, Sam Cleary and Jill Mitchell have been wonderful, as well as our contracted services staff through Rehab Associates, um, and potentially our contracted service staff through, um, the Center for Children with Special Needs. We're trying to, um, develop a voluntary, live, in-person, related services program for our most impaired students in line with the, um, and in accordance with the requirements of the reopening Connecticut document. Um, we've identified our C L C students as those, those most in need of learning support services and therefore we have sent out a survey to our C L C parents to see if they would be willing, or if they're interested in a voluntary, um, in-service program to include OT, P T, speech and potentially behavioral consultation. So far, we've heard back from about half of those that, um, we surveyed last week. We sent out a follow-up early today, um, and about two-thirds of those are interested in the voluntary program and, um, about twenty parents, um, have, have opted to participate in the distance learning. They don't want live services at this time under the circumstances. Um, so we will continue to finalize that plan or work on that plan and we're also working on a plan to see if we can begin to complete the many psychological evaluations or psychoeducational evaluations that were either in process or had not begun yet, um, due to the closure. So, more details will come on that. As for the high school summer program, that also will be a distance learning program that will run July sixth to the thirty-first, daily from eight to twelve. That will include two sessions, two two-hour sessions, um, and more information will come out on that. We're revising the, um, high school, summer school catalog. Um, we've met with all the involved people. Registration is going to be done this year via online and payment is going to also going to be done via online through IC, so, um, that is moving along as well. Is there any questions about those two programs?
Mrs. Rotelli?
Hi. Um, yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. I'm, uh, extremely busy today. Um, so do you know, uh, Rob, when you will know for certain whether or not those live services can take place?
Well, we have...
Are we standing inside a building?
Yes. We have Ward High School, we have the rooms. We've already given, um, the list of hours that the, the identified students were recommended for, for E S Y. Our related service providers from Rehab Associates, including OT, P T and speech, are putting together a schedule. Once they put that schedule together, we will incorporate that into our plan. We will review it with Sam's and with Jill for final approval, um, for implementation.
So, and, and...
Actually...
Do we hear the stuff that, that, uh, that that will be happening? It's not sort of a maybe, it's a definite?
Well, we're planning as if we're going to implement it. We've ordered, Angeles and I are going to take a walkthrough through the space that we're going to use. Um, we've ordered the P P E that we need to run the program. Um, we, we just need to finish the, writing the plan up, have Sam and Jill review it and move forward with that. But yes, we are planning on, um, implementing that program.
Okay. And so, my, my next question is, um, I know that you've identified the C L C, the C L C students as the most in need, but there are children in the district that have significant who are not queuing and receive services on a consistent basis. Could those families be able to contact you as a way of vetting their children, um, available for that live related services as well?
At this point, following the state rules, um, we were, we were required to prioritize those in most need of the learning recovery support. I understand that that leaves us open for questions from other parents of non-C L C students. But the conversation we've had, it's a conversation I think every district has had. Um, most districts have chose not to pursue a voluntary live in-service program for their identified, um, highest-risk population in need of those recovery services and students who had the most difficulty accessing distance learning. So, you know, we, we chose to, you know, it wasn't difficult to identify that the C L C students were the highest, um, you know, were the population of students that, that had the most difficulty accessing, um, related, I mean, accessing distance learning and that they are the population of students in, in greatest need for those learning recovery supports. But I can't make a commitment to, like, other populations of students until I have a final, like, number of what we potentially are looking at serving.
Well, I would, I would hope that if there is a, uh, a family or a student who, you know, has a significant I U P and can get, you know, speech five days a week, they would be under consideration to be able to get speech therapy and, and this model this summer.
Bonnie, I, 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 I appreciate your sentiments very much. We are doing, and, and, and I, I pledge to you and to the rest of the board that we are doing the best we can. We don't sleep over this whole E S Y, um, you know, challenge that we're faced, but your, your concerns are well-received and I completely understand them.
I, 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 I understand them. The last thing I want to, um, mention and say is, it's historically, there's sort of a perception as a said parent that when you're talking about E S Y services at your, at your P P T, that if you do not opt into the, in taking those in a regular year, that somehow it may affect the services you get in the coming year because you're sort of saying you don't need them over the summer or whatever. And if this year in particular, with the children who, you know, the parents will not be or will be opting out of E S Y just because they're overwhelmed and need a break and can't manage it, can you just assure those parents that that will not affect the services their children get, um, in fall?
Uh, absolutely not. I, I know that talking to countless parents of students with disabilities over the past several months, this has been an extraordinary challenge for a lot of parents and a lot of students with disabilities, um, extraordinary challenge. It's, it's, it's flabbergassing for some how intense and exhausting this is despite the efforts on the school staff and the family to work tirelessly together on behalf of the student. It has not been an optimal platform for learning for many of our students with disabilities. This will have a parent opt out of E S Y distance learning that will have no impact on recommendations or eligibility for E S Y in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lefter?
Hey, Rob, I know you guys are all working so hard. I just have a few more questions in line with Ms. Rotelli's. Um, I think, uh, the public perception is that, has the state issued guidelines that are restricting us from offering in-person services?
They, they issued their rules for, um, for preparing for a safe return to the classroom and the rules for, uh, operating summer school programs, which includes, you know, it's, it's all based on student safety. It includes, you know, all the requirements for how many students can be in a class, the P P E, the sanitation, um, requirements, the transportation requirements. They're very detailed. But yes, they received their final rules. They, um, sent to districts, I think, June first, and we received them June second.
So, I think part of the confusion is that the state has also allowed for summer camps to open, up to groups of ten. That was the guideline. Is, I'm assuming from what you're saying, what they've issued to schools is much more restrictive?
Yes.
This is going to sound crazy, but I want to ask it. Is there a way that we could offer an E S Y program intense outside? Like, is there a way to make E S Y fit into the camp?
I, I will say this because the guidelines do talk about ventilation and, you know, if, if at all possible, do it in open air or outside or with windows open. if at all possible, do it in open air or outside or with windows open. The population of students that we're talking about, excessive heat is really a challenge for them. And so I don't know if there is that kind of flexibility to develop an outside program with different criteria than we are utilizing. But we were considering the need for, you know, cooler air, even if that means windows open. So the heat, which impacts our most complex learners negatively, so...
Do the CLC students inside in the spaces available and then see if any parents would even be interested? Should it be possible to have an alternative to possibly serve other kids? I know, and I'm sure many board members know, and you, no one knows better than you, Rob, but, you know, parents are feeling almost panicked about the lack of progress. Their kids are able without these services. So I'm just trying to think...
That's why, that's why we're looking at the voluntary related services program. And then when school reopens, addressing recovery learning through an extended day or through, you know, other means so we can make up for lost instruction. It is, it does not go unnoticed by school staff the negative impact that this closure is having on, you know, students with disabilities particularly.
Mr. Mankusi and Mr. Cummings, would you mind if I inserted myself at this point? Because I have been involved in many of the problem-solving conversations and the thinking through of how we're going to approach this with Mr. Mankusi. So I will say that he has made every effort to try to think through how we could possibly make this work for students. And it's been, it's been weeks in the making to get to this point. One thing I do know from talking to my counterparts in other districts is that we are alone in Fairfield County for even offering related services. The other districts around us are entirely distance learning, including related services at this point. That was my conversation with my colleagues last week. The other piece to keep in mind is that even though we do have incredibly dedicated staff, the reality of the situation is that, and I think we're going to face this in the fall as well, that there are people who we would normally count on to deliver services who are going to have their own health concerns or health concerns of members of their family and just are not... We would really have a challenge getting the staffing, to be honest, to come in and have a live, have a live program for the number of students we're talking about.
All right, Colleen, I have a question. This is Tricia Pitco. Christine, I'm sorry.
Tricia, can you just, Ms. Leeper, pass the floor right now?
Okay.
You can be next, but thanks for being that I can't see. I appreciate you jumping in. Ms. Leeper?
Just, I guess, one last question. And I don't want to seem like I'm at all unappreciative of all the efforts you have all put in because I can't even imagine the hours. I just also want to provide a little transparency for the community because I think sometimes it's hard to know all the things that you guys have done the thought exercise on and come to the conclusion that can't work. So could you let us know, why can't we utilize more classrooms to offer more services? Like, what is the limiting factor for how many children we can serve over the summer?
Well, I want to go back. Rob, let me jump in because I go back to what Ms. Dizzy just said, what Mr. Mankusi said at the beginning. I think, you know, as Ms. Dizzy just said, I think this is also an issue for the fall. There's a lot of questions right now under the guidelines that the state has put forward that raise issues of, you know, quite honestly, supply and demand. You know, it's supply and demand of staff, the availability of staff. There's going to be issues in the fall around buses and the availability of the number of buses that we're going to need. So I don't think it's a question of the number of rooms at this point. We've got much of the district at our disposal. Even we would have enough air-conditioned spaces. It's a similar issue to what we're facing with the Lyracy Boost Program in the primary grades. We, the current restrictions are so tight on us that it makes it very difficult to put an in-person program in place. And we have to do, we're kind of forced into the next best thing, knowing, as Ms. Mankusi said, that it still doesn't live up to what we would really like to do. And I want to follow up with this issue around the related services program. I would tell you that we could have, we could have announced this two, three weeks ago and said we weren't doing anything. That the holdup has been Ms. Mankusi and his staff's tenacious desire to get the very, the most we can possibly do. And then working with Rehab Associates and other related services to make sure that those folks could come in and would be willing to extend themselves. I mean, this is, that's been the most difficult part of this. And I want to say that people have been very cooperative, but there's so much detail that has to be worked out and we're in such uncharted territory that, you know, we certainly recognize everybody's desire to get back into school and we want to be very supportive of that. But I think people really need to read through those regulations that have been put out by the state and then play out the ramifications of them. Because what we're doing exceeds what other districts are doing. And that's, again, because the staff wants, is aware of what's happened to these students and wants to meet their needs to the best of our ability. And our ability, quite honestly, is limited at this point.
Can I just say one more comment on their... For parents who want to choose, who choose for their child to participate in the voluntary related services program, we're working on a notice of risk. You know, it's going into its second iteration since the guidelines or the rules from the state were finalized. But the notice of risk, it's meant to be informative in nature. So parents are clearly informed of the health risks or the potential health risks that they or their child face if participating in live services. When I first read those, I sent them to Mike and Colleen and it were, they were overwhelming, quite honestly. I was just reading it from a parent's perspective, but then trying to like, you know, after the shock worked and I just realized it's a necessary and required document to provide to parents so they know exactly the risks involved. And then there's a permission slip that they're going to have to be able to sign as well once they read that risk.
Thank you all. Ms. Pitco?
I actually, a couple of questions I had, Mr. Cummings answered. So first of all, thank you. I really want to make sure that the public is aware. I think that perception has been put out there now that this is on the backs of the teachers, that the live instruction for all children isn't happening because of them. And I know you sent an updated message out and I read through it, but I'm hoping that people didn't miss it. And I don't know if there's a better way to communicate what this is actually going to look like for people.
Once our plan is developed, you know, I put in my update today to special ed parents, it will be posted. It's required that we post that on our website. And I will, in my special education parent update, provide the link to that right in the email so they can have access to what our specific plan will look like.
Oh, Mr. Mankusi, Ms. Dizzy, as a science teacher, I'm all about data. Given the restrictions that the state is putting on us to do live instruction, how much more staff would we have needed for all students equitably to receive service, receive live instruction this summer?
For all our students who qualify for ESY?
Yes.
I'm going to have to figure that number out. I could, we have, right now, and we're still having a lot of PPTs, we have over 500 students that are determined eligible for ESY services right now.
I mean, I think if people could see it in a numbers sense, they would understand why even though we asked the Board of Finance for extra funds to make this possible, that in the end, those restrictions are why it's not possible.
Yes. And I will tell you, at the time of presentation of the various ESY options, when we presented to the Board of Finance, our staffing projections were much more favorable for being able to handle an ESY program like full-scale live than we are currently at. And I will also, in addition, Ms. Pitco, you had asked, like, what our cost or our per diem or per hour pay for summer is compared to our area districts. It was significantly, significantly less than all districts. I mean, we pay $38.76 per hour. Of the seven districts I've so far been able to get figures from, they range from, most of them are like, I mean, Greenwich goes up to $86 an hour. Wilton is $81 an hour. Gary Anne's between 65 and 75. Norlock is the lowest at 47. So we're at $38.76, so...
I think, just to piggyback off of that, I think a lot of people that I spoke to in the district in the last few days did not know that teachers are not contractually obligated to teach summer school.
That teachers are what?
That our teachers are not contractually obligated to teach summer school.
Mm-hmm.
They can choose to do so for extra income. And if that income is higher to give up your summer months, you're going to go somewhere else. So my last question is, if you can look at the data, if we had adhered, well, if we adhered to the guidelines of the busing, what would it have taken for us to bus the students this summer to ESY? If we had moved forward, I mean, I saw the guidelines for it and I know you sent out a survey asking parents. I totally believe that parents would have driven their kids if they thought they could get in live ESY. But if we had to bus every single one of those students per those CDC guidelines, what would it have looked like? You don't have to give that to me now. It's just something to think about, you know, moving forward.
Well, I can tell you just real quick, if you think about, I'll take Mr. Mankusi number five of students. Under those guidelines, on a big bus now, on a big bus, you're about able to put 11 or 12 students plus a bus monitor. So you're talking, what, 45 buses that would have to be put into service during, for an ESY program? That also was one of the issues with the Lyracy Boost Program, which has about 90 kids. And you go from two buses to nine. So these are all things that are, you know, again, I go back to some of it is supply and demand, some of it is cost, but the fundamental issue is supply and demand. And I want to circle back to staff for a minute because I'm not discounting the per hour fee because I think that that does play a part of it. But I also will say to you, just as we're starting, as we've been having conversations with staff about summer work and curriculum work and instructional planning work to get ready for next year, we've not even been able to touch June. As people on the board know, as board members know, we usually try to get a lot of work done in June after school gets out before people kind of scatter in July. We can't even get people to the table. I just think, and just like with the parents, people are just spent. And I think that that's also part of it. People want to prioritize their own well-being and the well-being of their children and families as well. So there's those competing forces this summer that are playing a part of it. And as Ms. Mankusi said, we by no means are putting this on the staff. We certainly recognize where staff is and are very appreciative of their own performance. So there's a number of factors that go into this. And I want to say again, we do everything we can, you know, looking ahead, we can to address these same, very same questions in September because they're going to not go away. And we've got, you know, we're committed to bringing kids back, but what that looks like is going to probably still fail some people's expectations.
Ms. Pitco, do you have any further questions?
No, I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Mexicanelli?
Yeah, and Mr. Cummings kind of already said it, but I still feel the need to do so. I just, to Mr. Mankusi, it's, I'm sorry that you had to start the way that you did with, you know, any sense of apology that any staff felt that that letter was against them. I think it was important information for the public to have because they would have asked the question. And I found the phrasing of it to be very fair and factual. And to Mr. Cummings' point, though, no staff owes anybody any explanation for why July is not the time for them to continue teaching. Speaking person, you know, and, but just knowing what everybody's been through. No one owes anybody an apology. No one owes anybody an explanation. It's completely understandable. And anybody who, for financial or other reasons, was willing, that would have been great. But I did appreciate that piece of information in the letter because I would have asked anyway, you know, if that played a part, so...
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm sorry that you had to start that way. But is there any possibility that you would have some of those students, either ones who had received some services or who deferred or anything, come back a week early in August? You know, before the school year starts to transition? Is that part of this conversation or are there prohibitions against that or obstacles in the way of that?
We have not gone there. That certainly is a possibility. If it is feasible to bring kids back or safe to bring kids back early, that conversation has not been had. It's an idea, perhaps worth exploring. But what we have talked about is how can we address the needs of students with disabilities to the greatest extent possible? Like, in-person, when we are planning our reopening plan or in the fall? And what that would look like for special education versus, you know, general education? So we are looking to get our students back in-person as fast as we can because we realize not only just the educational impact it's having, but we appreciate the struggle that our families are having.
Thank you. And I do, and I will say, I appreciate you for asking about that camp merging of ideas. I wondered that and I appreciate your asking that. I actually wanted to switch gears to the high school and I don't know to Mr. Cummings for this. Those courses, I assume, are they both credit recovery as well as students looking to advance in the curriculum?
What I could say is they're primarily credit recovery courses or courses that students need to graduate for this summer.
So to that point, and I have absolutely no idea how many numbers usually were a factor here, but how is that impacting any of the high school scheduling issues? If they are, have students who wanted to accelerate in math, for example, or who wanted to accelerate going into an AP Chem as a sophomore and need to take chemistry in the summer? Those kinds of situations, have those students been, have their schedules adjusted differently? Or are they still thinking that they're going to have the chance to do that this summer?
I don't know, Ms. Mexicanelli. I think that's, I have to have with the counseling staff at both schools. I don't know where they are with that. I'd have to follow up with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Mexicanelli? Okay, Ms. Jacobson?
Hi, Jen Jacobson. Just a couple follow-up questions on the current topics. I'll just kick off with the high school program, following up on Jen Jacobson and Kelly's question. I'm curious if you could give us a little bit in terms of the differential between last year's need for credit recovery and this year's need for credit recovery? Are they close or are we seeing a greater need?
We don't have those exact numbers yet. There's a lot of feedback coming. What I will say is we did project a 50% increase in our summer school, high school summer school budget in anticipation of greater demand. I just don't know what those numbers are yet. The high school counselors are working with the, you know, the principal of the summer school program on finalizing those numbers.
Okay, thank you. I think we'd probably be curious to know what that looks like across the board here in terms of numbers once everything gets settled in all these programs on increased need based on the current situation. And then going back to Mr. Cummings, your statement on, and just, and Mr. Mankusi as well, concerns around staff, which, given the circumstances, that looking towards the fall, you had expressed some concern that that might be similar in the fall possibly, knowing that that's months away. But I'm wondering if we are being proactive in terms of trying to take an inventory of that now and if we need to be doing any recruiting over the summer?
Yes, we're going to, let me address that. We've got, by the end of this month, you should be able to state guidelines for what school reopening will look like. So it's similar in a sense to what the summer school... So it's similar in a sense to what the summer school program guidelines are. When we have those, um, kind of parameters in place, when we have an understanding of what those are, we're going to, uh, work with staff to share those out, and then say, based on this, um, you know, are you able to, be able to return to work? Um, you know, some of that is gonna be driven by those parameters and the conditions under which people find themselves. And then we've also got, obviously, deal with the, as was mentioned earlier this evening, the, uh, whether they have complications, uh, you know, they're high-risk themselves, or they live with people who are high-risk. And we, and we have a similar conversation with our families and students, because I've heard from a number of parents this spring about, um, it's not necessarily their children who are in school. It might be a younger brother or an older brother, it might be mom or dad or a grandparent who lives with them. And they're very hesitant to send their kids back into, uh, you know, the public environment like that. So we're gonna have to survey both, uh, based on these months. But I'm waiting to have a little bit more definition of exactly what that is.
Okay, okay, just my last thing on, um, the Twitter, okay, uh, thank you for that. I know we're in, in the process, um, and I'm aware we're being done. The, uh, my last question that I had was, um, in terms of the summer guidelines that we receive, and knowing that they are posing a difficulty, and they're talking about, you know, like, you know, having, having problems in front of us. Why is the system and any of the, uh, setup or management administration to provide E D L feedback, um, on the feasibility, practicality, challenges, uh?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to be, we are getting very embarrassed, you guys are on the shore. If anybody could understand what you're saying, what you were saying, um, I'm hearing none. You still have, you sound like you're underwater sort of, um, and being electrocuted at the same time. I'm gonna go to Mrs. Rotelli, I'll come back to you, maybe your sound will be better. Um, and if it's not, I would ask if you follow up with Mr. Mancusi.
Christine, can I just make a suggestion? Could she possibly?
Yes, Ms. Rotelli, so.
Could she possibly enter it in the chat, and then you could read it aloud for the public?
Um, sure, I, you know, I think that the chat does get included. All right, she's okay, she's saying move on. Um, Ms. Rotelli?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, to Mr. Mancusi, did you, how many positions did you need to fill for dis- for distance learning? I mean, I mean for E S Y, if it were live and in-person? Did we have, like, what was the shortfall with what we needed versus how many people said they would do it?
I'm gonna have to get that number. The coordinators really were the ones that recruited most of the, the staff to cover, um, their caseloads. So I, I, I could easily get that to you, I just don't have it with me on right now.
Okay, and, and, um, how are we with, you know, contracts on distance learning E S Y?
We're doing okay. We made the contract for a couple of special ed teachers, but we're in much better shape with distance learning.
Did you get those num- the numbers for that for me?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on this topic? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mancusi, for your work on this, and for, um, I wish that we could serve more students, but I do appreciate that we are doing more than many districts in this area, so I appreciate that. And hopefully, um, you wouldn't, and just for the board's, um, information, and having these just conversations with the Board of Finance, and, you know, I think that they were aware that there was a chance that we may not be able to offer summer school, but we also indicated that there would then be a greater need for recovery students, services for when these students return to school. So while there might be a cost savings for summer school, there might be, and higher recover, costs for recovery services come September.
That's one hundred percent correct.
Okay, thank you, um, Ms. Leaper, sorry.
I have one last question, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Um, this is like a really great opportunity to give the state feedback on how manageable or unmanageable their criteria are to actually roll out in a school district. Looking through that twenty-four-page guidelines document, um, makes you wonder how much time in schools these people may have spent. It's nearly impossible to have no two children touch any of the same materials in the course of an entire day. As one small example, but there are twenty-four pages of those. So I'm wondering if there is, has the state set up, um, some sort of listening mechanism to hear from district leadership, like superintendent?
Um, I would, uh, I'm, I'm not aware of a formal process at this point. I think they're getting a lot of feedback through the superintendent associations, the regional superintendents, as well as, as well the, um, Association of Public Schools superintendents. I know that there was a communication today, um, from CAPS, which is the Connecticut Association of Public Schools superintendents, uh, to the governor and to the commissioner, looking for, um, I don't want to say a bigger seat at the table, because I don't know if the backstory to say that that was really what the request was about, but really to have, to make sure that the, the voice of the superintendents was being heard as we go forward. I think that, I, I, I will tell you, I was on the phone with a number of regional superintendents, assistant superintendents on the weekend that the draft guidelines were, um, released. And while that was not the topic of our conversation, not the purpose of my phone call, every phone call began and ended with, um, real deep concerns about the level of those things. And we, and we recognize that Health Department officials are writing them and instituting them, but you're right, there's a, there's a seeming separation from those expectations and the world of school. That has to be reconciled.
Yeah.
Particularly among children. And, and what I could add to that, because I've had several conversations with our special education attorneys regarding the notice of risk and the permission form, they are providing the state with great amount of, you know, input on how school districts hands are, I mean, how difficult this is for school districts to implement live in-service or in-person programming based on the rules. And they're not even guidelines, they're rules.
Absolutely, and if you think there is a role that we could play in advocating through CAPS, the, for the Public, the Connecticut Association of Board, uh, School Boards, um, to also ensure that you, there is a louder voice at the table that represents, um, schools, and school officials and superintendents just, I think, let us know, because it will be a tragedy, and perhaps there might be like a public mutiny if what prevents families from being able to send their kids back to school are rules that are not implementable to actually having children in schools. So that's all I have to say on that. But if there's a way that we can be advocating, also through CAPS or any other mechanism, I hope you will let us know as a board. Didn't mean to speak for everybody there, but I, I.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaper, thank you, Mr. Mancusi. Okay, moving on, adoption of policy sixty-nine ninety-nine, instruction, district provided distance learning. That the board recommended motion, the Board of Education, dot policy sixty-nine ninety-nine, instruction, just, district provided distance learning. Can I have a motion, Mr. Asa, second by Mrs. Gerber? Um, Mrs. Max McInally, anything to add to this that you haven't already shared?
Uh, no, I received no questions from the board, so, um, if there were any now, I'd be happy to try to tackle them.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Max McInally? Seeing none, take it to the board for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, seeing and hearing none, motion carries nine zero. New business to hear, consider and act upon the memorandum of understanding between the Fairfield Board of Finance and the Fairfield Board of Education, that the Board of Education approved the memorandum of understanding for enclosure number two. Can I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Leaper? I'm just, so, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Montal, Mr. Peterson and I met with the Board of Finance last week, um, to review the memo of understanding. I received this memo the morning of their meeting, so I apologize not getting it to the board sooner. I got it to you as soon as I received it. We, um, we had a good conversation, um, at the meeting. They were very open to hearing our feedback, um, and I also would just, you know, really like to thank Mr. Matola and Mr. Walsh for the work that they did in crafting that. Given the short timeline we had and the time that we got it to, before it was going before the Board of Finance, they took time with us during that day just to answer questions, um, you know, address some of our concerns. Ms. Montal, Mr. Cummings, Mrs. Gerber, and I met during the day just to kind of, um, talk about some, you know, talk about the language, Mr. Mancusi also, and if there was anything that we need to be concerned about. One of our biggest concerns was that some of the original language in the M O U required, um, additional approval by the Board of Finance, um, to access funds that were not outlined in the appendix of anticipated COVID-related expenses, expenses. An amendment was made by the Board of Finance to strike that language, um, which made us all the more comfortable, and they approved it unanimously. It now comes before us for approval, um, and per our approval, it will then be signed by me and the chairman of the Board of Finance. I will give it to Mr. Cummings and Ms. Montal if there's anything to add that I haven't, or Mr. Peterson, or Mr. Asa, who was also involved in a lot of these discussions to, um, get this moving forward.
Um, thank you, Ms. Rotelli, I, I don't have anything to add. I think that's a good summation of the conversation. I think this is a very deliberative, um, you know, process between the Board of Finance and, uh, Board of Education representation and the administration. This has clearly been going on for almost two full months now, um, but I think there was a recognition of where we are, where we've been, and where we need to go, and also an understanding that, um, where we need to go is very ill-defined unfortunately for all of us at this point. So I, I just, I appreciate the support, and I just want to echo the, um, the comments you made about Mr. Walsh and Mr. Matola, as well as the, the Board of Finance and their, and their acceptance and understanding of that. I don't know if Ms. Montal has anything to, to add to that.
Uh, not really, I think, um, um, you know, everything's been said that, um, needed to be said.
Christine, if I could just, if I could just add?
Absolutely, Mr. Peterson.
Hi, Jeff Peterson, I just, I just, as at the meeting, I just want to clarify that we had a, the conversation about this was, was long and very detailed. Um, and, and I think that it, it became clear in the course of that conversation that, that Mr. Matola and Mr. Walsh's intent in, in drafting this to begin with was not to hamstring us in any way about what we could, uh, allocate money toward. Uh, in fact, they, they said explicitly that they wanted to try to avoid any, uh, you know, locking us into a, a specific, uh, matrix of, of expenses. So when the, when the time came, and, and I think it was, it was good for all of us to, to, to get out what our intentions were and what our reservations were, and, and when the time came, it was Mr. Walsh himself who made the motion to, uh, to eliminate the, uh, the audit language in one of the, in one of the provisions. So I, I think that the conversation, while it was, while it was long and we sometimes went over the same ground, it was very productive in the sense that we have a very clear understanding where they were and where we are. So I want to thank them for, for their efforts in that, and I want to thank, you know, our, our, our chair and our, our staff for, for all of their efforts in putting this together. This was a, this was a big effort, and I'm glad that it came out the way this did.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Peterson. I, I agree that there was a very open and honest discussion, and, you know, they under, you know, two lawyers drafted this. It was reviewed by the town attorney. Um, I think if a layperson reads it, you might think it was overly prescriptive, but their intent was not to have us come before them every month. We're going to be updating them at our quarterly report. Um, they understand that the original list of COVID-related expenses is going to change, especially as state guidelines change, um, and they are just as committed as we are to getting students back in those buildings. They appreciate that it's going to take resources, and I appreciate their support through this process. Um, Mr. Walsh also offered to call into our meeting tonight if, you know, the board had any additional questions. I, based on, you know, just the feedback that I had gotten from people after our meeting, um, and before our meeting, I felt comfortable that we were in a good place. Um, I do feel like we do have a, a mutual understanding on what this document is and how we are going to proceed moving forward. Any other questions, Mrs. Max McInally?
Uh, just very briefly, as it would appear one of the only board members who did not have an active hand in doing this, it would be remiss for me not to thank those of you who, from the finance committee to the group meeting with Board of Finance, to all of the back-channel work that, the, the, my fellow board members that you did on this, obviously in addition to the staff, I mean, thi- this is, this is very powerful. I'm enormously grateful that the Board of Finance worked as collaboratively with us as they did. And again, to you, my fellow board members, thank you for putting in the time that you did, because this is millions of dollars, this is making a tangible impact on education for next year. So thank you so much for your work.
And I do feel comfortable, um, moving this forward. I tried to, you know, bring as many people as I could involved in this process just so we all, as individuals, had an understanding of, you know, what this, what this document means moving forward. So seeing no other comments, um, Ms. Picko, I can't see you. If you have anything to add, feel free to jump in before we take it to the floor for a vote. Okay, hearing none, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions, seeing and hearing none, motion carries nine zero. Moving on, budget update. We're gonna hand this over to Ms. Montal, who'll provide us with updated budget projections, enclosure number three.
Yep, thank you. Um, enclosure number three is the six-one, uh, updated projection for the nineteen-twenty, uh, year. Um, I'm gonna concentrate on column three, which is the variance from the, uh, last projection on four-thirty. Uh, the bottom line is, um, the last projection, we had a balance of three-point-three-six. We were projecting a balance of three-point-three-six, and the projected balance, um, is currently three-point-five-three. So there's been a, a delta of about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, I'll, I'll just go, go over the majority, you know, the major reasons for that. Um, salaries, they continue to change, you know, as leave of absences and staffing, um, situations change. Um, nothing, uh, much on benefits, um, special ed, a little bit of a change, decline, uh, schools. We have help, um, the school funds are accessible to the schools. We've, um, asked them, since they won't have their twenty-twenty-one budget available to them, uh, most of them before the end of the year when they get gear up for next year, um, we're letting them use up their balances this year. Um, we are, uh, one of the changes in support, um, in the support category was in, um, legal fees. We are now anticipating a balance of about a hundred and fifty thousand in legal fees. Um, then also, um, in maintenance, operation and transportation, these transportation calculations have been updated now with the, um, the new transportation amendment with those calculations. So those numbers are reflected in here. Um, because of that, we, we were able to, um, give maintenance, um, allow them to spend more money now that, uh, supplies are, some supplies are becoming more available and deliveries are becoming easier also now that the schools are opening up. Um, we did have additional savings in, um, utilities, about two-hundred thousand for electricity and about a hundred and ninety for heat. Now, that gives us a good, that's based on actual information with the closure. So that gave us a better idea of, of the kinds of invoices we would be seeing. Um, and those, those are the major changes, so we're, we're doing well. Um, you know, I, I expect us to fall in that three-point-five million dollar, um... You know, I expect us to fall in that 3.5 million dollar threshold somewhere.
Thank you, Ms. Munsell. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Moving on, discussion of maintenance projects. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you want to start this before handing it over to possibly Mr. Papa George?
You're muted, Mike.
I am.
I'm sorry, I'm closed.
I am, I am, you're good now.
Okay. Mr. Papa George has been working with his staff to take advantage of the closure to get ahead on some projects. So I'll just let him speak to where he's been and where he's heading. Mr. Papa George?
So before you have our list of projects for 2021, we were able to get some of the projects that were originally on that list accomplished ahead of time with some of the savings. Some you'll recognize are the Ward and Ledlow softball fields were rebuilt. They're finishing up wards this week. Ledlow's is already finished. The courtyard issue with the water in the buildings, we were able to move forwards with that one too. So that will actually happen this Friday and Saturday all day. They're going to be working up there to take care of that stuff. So some of the projects we were able to move forwards with so that opened up some space for the budget for next year. So we were able to move some projects in there. Some of those projects that you're seeing now, you probably did not see before because it went, they were cut originally before we came to the board with our original round of budget numbers. So we were able to move them back into next year's budget. So that's, in a nutshell, that's where we stand. If you have any questions about the projects or what we decided to move forwards, I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody have any questions about the substitute maintenance projects? Ms. Jacobson.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Just a couple of things. Thank you so much for putting this together. And I'm super excited to see that we're able to move some of our facility needs forward, even in the midst of what we're all dealing with right now. It's really nice to see. So thank you for that. Just a couple of questions on this that I wanted to reconcile between the two documents really quickly. I noticed that on the proposed budget catch document, that we had the upgrade playground for Jennings was noted as postponed. But on the substitute document, it's on there as installing. So I just want to make sure that what's happening is that Jennings is getting a full new playground, correct?
They are getting a new playground. You'll see the number changed a little. The original budget number was put back into there. We had originally cut it and we were just going to do some repairs and some upgrades on it. But because of the savings, we were able to put the original budget number back in.
Okay, so the postponed just means it's happening in fiscal year 21?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then I noticed that, it seems to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, in reconciling all the documents, that the only thing that's really cut right now is the Fairfield-Bogo High School scoreboard. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. And we did cut that one. We felt it could be cut at this time because of the working scoreboards there. We were able to get them improved and working with some repairs last year. So we're moving forwards without them in the budget.
Okay, all right. And that was just going to be my follow-up, that it's working and in good repair and that's feasible. So you answered that question for me. So that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Ms. Maxmanelli.
Yeah, just one quick question. The line 26 about the grounds contract, I was wondering, is that for a service that we are outsourcing? Or was that a favorable result with an existing contract?
The, we and the town put bid out together ground services for the schools and the town parks. And the bids came in low, during the budget build-out, we were still out to bid or going out to bid because the town was having some issues with their town people getting together at that point. They didn't know who was leading, who was there. So we were delayed in putting it out to bid. But we've actually received the bids back. The new contractor is working for us now and we are seeing savings based on the new bid from what we originally budgeted.
Okay, so it's, I just want to be clear though, but this was for something we had always been outsourcing?
Correct.
This is like a new thing we're outsourcing?
Nope, it's a new company, but we've been, they were, the last company was with us five years.
Thank you.
Ms. Asa.
I just wanted to piggyback on that outside contractor for the grounds maintenance. Mr. Papa George, can you confirm if that is a out-of-state company that the town contracted with now?
So there had been some questions about that because there's, some of their vehicles are registered out of New York. Company is located in Stanford, Connecticut. So they do work in New York. They have a bunch of people who employed by them who live in just over the New York border. They came with high references, Southern Connecticut uses them. So we were comfortable with their bid. So that's why we went with them. But yes, they do have some New York vehicles that are working on site, but they are a Connecticut-based company.
Okay, and I appreciate you just saying that on the record for the public.
Any other questions about maintenance projects? Ms. Maxmanelli.
Nick, were you done? Okay, so I apologize. I had one other question, which isn't exactly about a maintenance project. This is to Mr. Cummings. You included the new chart because it was part of this conversation. And it just might be helpful for you or the public to just realize that if it could be classified as 20.1 administrative regs, because the one, and the one we have online hasn't been updated?
I'm sorry, I think I, I'm not following you, Ms. Maxmanelli. I didn't, I didn't quite hear what chart you were talking about.
The one about the chain of command and the central office structure?
Oh, okay, yes, yes.
I had a little bit.
I thought that was part of this discussion because that was a budget issue.
Right now, we're just talking about the maintenance.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Hey Christine, I have something that's half on this list.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff, sorry. Jeff Peterson, I, it's not a specific question, but you may recall that during the budget season, I moved to eliminate the locker room project, in large part because I believe it does create a disparity, a large disparity between experience for athletes at Ward and Ledlow. Since we are looking to have an athletic update at some point later in the summer, I wonder if it might be possible, at least at that point, to try to have an idea of how we might go forward in addressing that disparity in future budget cycles. You know, obviously not architectural diagrams, but if it can be added to the discussion, how we can level the playing field between the sports experiences at the high schools, I would appreciate that.
Can I answer that?
Well, I wanted to ask a follow-up question first. Mr. Peterson, you're speaking broadly. You're not speaking, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're not speaking just about locker rooms. You're speaking about the breadth of the facilities, correct?
Well, the walk to the ward, you know, equipment shed is huge. And I understand that that was one of the reasons that we wanted to create this locker room space so that the, all those students didn't have to cross a, you know, cross the driveway, a parking area. But Ward has no such facility. The facility they do have has no certain occupancy, is really for equipment and not for people. So, you know, at some point, we're going, the question might be very validly raised by a sports parent. At Ward, how come they have a locker facility at Ledlow that's in close proximity to the field, but Ward does not? So that's the level of, you know, equity that I am kind of expecting to get questions about.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the maintenance projects? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to discussion of possible 2020, 2021 budget adjustments. Mr. Cummings, do you want to talk us through this?
Yeah, I will. I'm just trying to, we are going to, my page is here. So yeah, I will talk through the memo if you wish. I can answer any questions. And then as I stated in the memo, any other things, I addressed in this memo, I only have a line item. I welcome conversations, questions are not only around those items, but also other items there that either Ms. Munsell or Mr. Papa George can speak to. But what I will say is that, as kind of from a philosophical approach, I've here with the board before, when we're building a budget, we're looking to really address needs across the breadth of the system. You know, the school-based, district-based, instructionally, maintenance of facilities, supplies and materials. And to some degree, we take a similar approach, or I take it, try to take a similar approach when we're looking at when we have to face reductions. So that not any one thing can, is imperiled by budget reductions, particularly at this magnitude. So that's kind of the overall approach that we were taking that I was leading with this. I also will say that one of the things that we looked at is where does opportunity present itself to make thoughtful reductions? Where do those reductions happen? Where it can minimize impact on particular people or programs? And what budget reductions reflect changes in need? So, you know, those are kind of the operating principles under which the reductions are made. Yeah, I can go through item by item in the memo if you wish, or I can just simply answer questions. It's really your call, whoever would best suit the board.
I think that the memo was submissed. But we can just, I'll take it to the board for specific questions about the document. And before, just for the board's reference and the public's reference, part of the MOU and the setting up of that account, the Board of Finance was very deliberate in allocating 1.5 million dollars of that account, of the non-lapsing account, needs to be used to offset the reduction that was made by the Board of Finance during this past budget season. So when looking at this document, we tried to identify those items that would be cut from the operating budget, but then in turn be funded by the non-lapsing account. And trying to keep it as, was looking for big-ticket items just for ease of accounting for Ms. Munsell and also in reporting back to the Board of Finance on what is being covered by the non-lapsing. With that, I bring it back to the board for your questions. Mrs. Maxmanelli?
Sorry, so jumped in too early. I just wanted to put out there again that the operation, the chart, the organizational chart, if that could just be identified as administrative reg 2120.1, and hopefully get that posted as well. Because the one we have now, I think is, this will now be two iterations away from the one that's posted.
Nope, Ms. Jacobson. Hold on, let me unmute you.
Thank you, Jen Jacobson. I just wanted a quick update on the transportation credit. Has that been settled?
Ms. Munsell?
Or Ms. Munsell?
We're working on the final version for signature. It's been settled.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any questions about the recommended budget adjustment?
I'll just comment quickly as the person who asked about what an ORF was during the budget season. I'm glad the kids are getting their telephones.
I thought of you, Mr. Peterson, when I saw that on the list. And I said, they're going to get them because Mr. Peterson is going to ask about that. We had you covered.
We're the first.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll move on. First reading of policies. Mrs. Maxmanelli?
Sure. So what you have here, you may recall that we worked through a similar set of policies back relating to students. This is now certified and non-certified stat. Just to walk you through these documents, because this is a lot more pages than what you usually get. So we have our first one, 4111.1, and related to non-discrimination, affirmative action. And so this, in black is obviously all the new language. I don't know if there are any questions already about this one. Mrs. Vitale, should I go through all four and then have questions?
Why don't you go through all four?
Okay, so that's 4111 there is the first. And virtually all of the language is coming from attorneys. This is all legally advised language. We had a few tweaks here and there, but really very little. The next one is, hold on, sorry, I'm not working off hard copies here. Next one, policy 4118, and that's related to section 504. And this policy is brand-new, which is why the entire policy is in red. We do not have an existing one. So just explaining that. The next one is policy 4118.112. And this one is the sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. And that was originally its title. But on Ms. Dziesi's recommendation and policy talked about it. We are also, and that's the fourth action we're going to be asking the board to take. We currently have a Title IX policy. It is standalone for Title IX. And so it is the, it's Ms. Dziesi's feeling, it's a feeling of the attorneys that this one, sex discrimination and sexual harassment, covers all that would be encompassed by Title IX. So to avoid redundancy, we are going to be asking for the board to vote to delete our current Title IX policy. However, we did want it included in the title so that it was transparent to the public where they could find this information. One other thing specifically on the topic of this policy, if anyone happens to follow this issue, I know I listened in, I think Mrs. Jacobson listened in last week. Pullman, the attorneys, had a webinar regarding changes to Title IX that are coming. And that at first, we were worried that while we want to get this policy passed now in June, it's something that the district needs. There are some changes coming down the pike in August that the state will be mandating for the district in terms of how to handle, how to process formal complaints of a sexual discrimination, Title IX, sexual harassment nature. And there's a lot, it's quite prescriptive. A lot more is falling on the district in terms of the titles of people who will be investigating, making the decisions, hearing appeals for this whole process. And at first, we were thinking we were going to have to bring this back before the board for another vote just in a few months. But ultimately, we are pretty confident, Ms. Dziesi was very comfortable with the idea that all of those changes coming from the state, we're going to be able to address in the administrative regs. So we do not anticipate bringing this policy back. The regs will be changing however. But we just, in case anyone was following this issue at all, we just wanted to include that in our overview of the policy. So again, we're looking for the board to pass three policies and vote for the deletion of a fourth.
Thank you, Mrs. Maxmanelli. Does the board have any questions about any of these policies? Okay, seeing none. As always, if you have any questions, please get them to Mrs. Maxmanelli as soon as possible. This will be an action item on our next agenda. Moving on, the Board of Education, kind of a motion. The Board of Education approved the Board of Ed regular meeting minutes dated 5/26/2020. Mrs. Gerber seconded by Mrs. Rotelli. Any discussion? Seeing, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Seeing, hearing none. Motion passes nine zero. Superintendent's report. Mr. Cummings?
That issue has not gone away. And there is work being done on fields. There's progress being made on these. So, Mr. Papa George, could you just provide the board members with an update on, and the public on where we are with the field and remediation of the field?
So the whole...
I hear you for your first opening sentence, but I'm going to assume you were just giving us a field's update and we'll bring it to Mr. Papa George.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, not your fault.
So remediation plans have been submitted to deed for approval. And once we get back from them, the approval, we will have our onsite meetings and go over the plan. And once we get that, we will also present the plan to the board so that they're aware of what's going to happen at the school sites. Because of the government shutdowns and the slow, has been very slow to respond. We've been pushing them and they do know that our intent is to get the schools completed before anything happens in the fall with any type of return to schools. So they're on board with that. So they're on board with that, they just need the time to review.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none?
Okay. Yeah, uh, one of the other topics, I have two other things to talk about tonight, but the other one, um, that I wanna talk briefly about, or as long as you wish, if there's any questions. There, the, the memo I sent out on, uh, Friday, uh, to address some of the issues that we're going forward with in the district around, um, addressing, uh, racism and the greater level of diversity in, in the Fairfield Public Schools. And I, I wanna be clear that the approach we're taking is this idea that, um, is anti-racism and how we can become more proactive in our work. Uh, but one of the questions I got from quite a number of parents, um, was a question around our hiring practices. And I didn't address that specifically in the memo, perhaps I should have, but some of that work has already begun, and Ms. Deasy's been doing some of that work. So I'd just like her to provide an update to the board on where we are, um, and we can certainly then talk about where we need to go. Because we're cer, we're a long way from the finish line on that, but some of that work has already begun. So Ms. Deasy, if you could just speak to that a bit?
We're actually, oh, was I muted? You were, you, oh, sorry. Um, so beginning in January of this past year, we were required by the state, the State Department of Education, to develop a plan to increase our minority teacher recruitment. Um, so we formed a committee, um, it was myself, um, Arlene Gottesman joined us, Kristen Hardiman from my office, who works a great deal on recruitment, Teresa Jingray from McKinley, and then we had several teachers who are minority teachers who joined us as well. Um, and we started working on a recruitment plan. Most of what we were doing, we were doing through workshops that were being held regularly with, uh, by CES with other Fairfield County School Districts and their teams. So we were meeting collaboratively with the other teams who were doing the same work in the other districts. Uh, unfortunately, like, a lot of the good work we were doing, i- it did get derailed because of, uh, pandemic, and we ended up having to do the last meeting through CES, uh, virtually, which didn't have quite the same give and take that it did when we were in person. Uh, so at this point, we are, we're in the process of finalizing our plan. Um, it was, uh, really the value in this work while it was started, because we were mandated to do this by the state, the value was immediately apparent. Um, and, and the work that we were doing, i- i- and I think Mike will talk more to this, um, when he speaks on it, but one of the problems we face in Connecticut is there, there's a shortage of teachers, especially in the shortage areas determined by the state. But there's also only so many teachers who are being turned out by our teacher preparation programs who are, who are minorities. So there's a, there's a limited pool of people who are candidates of color that we can hire for these positions throughout the entire state. Um, so some of the work that we were doing at the county, as the school district was thinking about, how do we, how do we tap into our local resources to address this shortage? Um, and, and there are really two main ways that we identified with our committee. One is that the main way that hiring is done in Fairfield is that it's decentralized to the schools. Um, so when we have an all or mostly white administrative staff who's in charge of doing hiring, um, that's gonna influence not only who, who gets hired, but the, what candidates experience at, through the interview process when they are not white. Um, so one way we were thinking of addressing this was by tapping into our existing teaching staff to make sure that we have, um, you know, a, a way to develop our teaching staff to become administrators, especially when they're not white. Um, that we have a diverse group of administrators in Fairfield and that we're using our own teaching staff to create that diversity. Um, the other way that we were thinking about is that we live in a community with higher education, we're literally surrounded by it, by institutions of higher ed. So, um, if we have students in our high schools who are students of color, we, we should be working with them if they are interested in becoming teachers and partnering with our local universities and colleges to try to create a future teachers program. So those are two initiatives that there, there is a great deal of work that needs to be fleshed out. The latter is obviously a bigger lift and involves a lot more moving pieces than the former, um, but those, that's the direction we're generally hoping to go in.
Any questions? Okay, go ahead and go.
I'm sorry, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes. Mr. Peterson?
Hi, Jeff Peterson. Yes, thank you. Uh, Mike, I sent you, I sent you a letter over the weekend. I, I, I wanna know what you thought, we're on a particular point, I didn't hear Ms. Deasy raise, which is, I understand, and perhaps I'm mistaken about this, that last year, the Connecticut General Assembly passed a law, uh, that, uh, in part was aimed at, uh, what was aimed at, uh, increasing minority teacher recruitment, um, and in part was, uh, going to do this by, uh, lowering, uh, the bars for credentialing, for example, uh, having greater reciprocity agreements with, uh, with, uh, other states, uh, for the transfer of teacher credentials. I, I wonder if, 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 if I'm mistaken, i- in the hope that that may widen the applicant pool that we can, that we can draw from? And if that's, if, if that is the case, if that's something that, um, that you are perhaps already seeing, uh, a- as you look for new, uh, employees for open positions?
Um, I think it's, it's certainly a good way to do this, and I think that particularly giving, you know, our geographical proximity to New York would be, would benefit, uh, the, the districts in Fairfield County. Um, I think that, um, that's a, that's a strong possibility. I don't know offhand, we're just starting hiring season. I don't know if we're, we've seen, uh, an increase in, uh, candidates of color for our open positions at this point. I, quite honestly, Mr. Peterson, I've not been involved yet to that level of, of the work. Um, but I think it's something that starts to, um, is, you know, if you, to what Ms. Deasy's talking about, one of the concerns we have is that, uh, given the limited, um, pool at this point in the state of Connecticut, and, and in a sense, trying to, to create our own pipelines for this, that's a long-term process, right? It, that would certainly accelerate the ability of our district and other districts to more quickly meet the guidelines and expectations of the state, and really, whether they're in law or not, the, the guidelines, the expectations of our community. So, um, I'm open to anything that would, um, to, 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 to make that easier or more possible to happen. And, and I think quite honestly, having experienced this in other levels, some of the guidelines or the certification issues between the states are, uh, there's some value to them, but a lot of them are bureaucracy. So it's, that's a good thing to, to take, uh, the state is taking an approach at.
Well, I, I get that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna diminish the value, I think, that we should put on, on kind of longer, longer-term solutions, but the, you know, the minority teacher population in Fairfield is, is vanishingly low. Um, and, and, and I, so I would, I would hesitate to kind of endorse a solution that is only looking at the, at the long term. I, I think whatever we can do to pull from a wider pool, uh, would ultimately have greater benefit for our, for our students and our community. And I just, you know, that's, that's something that I, I would wanna hear a mix of, of shorter and longer-term ideas.
And that, and that really will be our approach. And I think what Ms. Deasy said too, is the idea of, how do we create, um, you know, this really is part of the conversation to have just our students. Um, how do we become a more welcoming community, more overtly welcoming, um, of, of candidates of color? You know, I, I don't know, I don't think we've necessarily done that, uh, you know, and I think that that's something that we have to really take a hard look at, at ourselves, our own practices.
One, one other note, Mr. Peterson, not that, not that our, our data is anything to be remotely proud of, but it, our edsite data that, that is on the state website around our teacher demographics is not accurate. Um, we have more than three black teachers in Fairfield. Um, the website says we have exactly three. So, uh, you know, I, I don't think that, like I said, it's, it's not a number I think we want to stand by ultimately, but it also is, is, um, perhaps not what the edsite data indicates.
But would it be appropriate then for you to get the board a report of minority teacher representation in Fairfield? And if that's not able to be done in public, can it be done in private to board members?
That will be complicated, but I can certainly try.
If the answer is no, I understand that, but if the answer is yes, I would let you hear.
I don't, I don't wanna listen before I say no.
All right. That's, that's, that's fine. I, I, I've said my piece.
Any other questions on this particular matter? Ms. Lieber?
Hey, Jennifer Lieber. Um, I'm wondering what sort of thought you guys have given in how we can incentivize more minority students to enroll in teacher training programs? Um, 'cause I think that's also a big part of the problem, not enough minority students are deciding they wanna become teachers. Part, part of that could be the debt to salary, um, burden of needing a four-year degree and a two-year master's degree with no, uh, student loan forgiveness. But, but what else could we be doing? Other things we could be doing in our high school to help put sort of that bug in our, in, in all students' ears, but specifically knowing how meaningful it is for minority students to be taught by minority teachers to, to kind of set up a pathway.
So that is one of the projects that I, I do want to take on, at, at least at the high school level, if we don't have a larger community partnership. Um, and I think it would be a matter of tapping into our existing minority teacher, uh, population that we have. Um, because I, it becomes a bit of a chicken and an egg problem, as you can imagine, that it's hard to inspire a student to become a teacher when they look around and none of their teachers look like them. So i- it, you know, or very few of their teachers look like them, I should say. So that is one of the major areas that we do want to tackle.
And forgive my ignorance, but does Fairfield University have a teacher training program?
They, they do have a master's program for, yes, we take the interns from them, we have a, we do have a partnership with them already, so it would be possible for us to expand that.
I just quickly looked them up, and I believe they have, and, and I can't speak to exactly what year this data is, but I'm assuming relatively recently, that I think 2.85% of their student body is black, so.
The New York Board of Report has a much more diverse student body.
Yeah, all right. So when you were, never mind, that's it for now, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just, i- if I could just want, make a comment here, and I think it's similar to the conversation we're having about summer programs. I wanna be really clear to anybody listening and to the board members that when we talk about obstacles, that's not to say that we are giving up, or we, these are the problems that we have. And 'cause we can get into these situations, and we can start to enumerate and list out all the problems, and, and I don't wanna give the impression that none of this is valuable or that, you know, the obstacles are so great that it's just not worth it. That, that's not why we, I do this. I think that it's really important that we're transparent. I think it would be really far more of, uh, uh, error, a long-term error, to, to gloss over these issues and not be honest about them. Um, I, I wanna be really clear that there's a commitment here to do these things and to do the right things, but part of the honest problem-solving is to put the issues on the table, and, and there are more issues. And certainly as we have conversations with people, um, and I'll, I'll get to this in a, in a minute, but as certainly as we expand the, the conversation, more issues will no doubt be put on the table that we're gonna have to address and take a hard look at. But I think it starts with being honest about the problems in order to find a solution. So I just want anybody listening, and, and again, board members, to understand that that's why we do this. Um, we wanna be fair about what the issues are. Again, not to say we can't do it, but let's, let's make sure that we put them on the table so that we can develop the best solutions.
Ms. Lieber?
Just one last thing, I just wanna thank you for, for starting this conversation. That's it. Thank you, okay. Back to you, Mike.
So just to follow, I, I was just about to say, or leading into, one of the things that, once we get past the end of the school year and graduations, um, on the following week, oh, oh, I got it on my calendar, we're gonna start to put together some, some forums. I've had a number of parents in the community reach out to me, um, around wanting to have further conversation. So we'll probably, um, I think, obviously, it'll be some type of Zoom-type format that we'll put together with parents and invite them in. My hope would be that the conversations would be, I'd rather have a number of smaller conversations than one big conversation. I wanna make sure that we capture voices. So, um, we'll be following up with information, uh, around the end of June with that, uh, to set some of those forums up and to run them through July so that we can, again, put, better do a better job, uh, beginning the dialogue.
Thank you. Um, anything else?
Yeah, just real quick, the, you know, we're going back to reentry. Um, uh, we are, the, the reentry committee is gonna meet again on June 17th in the afternoon. We, this parent, parent survey is out. Um, well, last I checked yesterday, there were about 1,300 parent responses, and I think around almost 800 student responses. Um, we also are working on the project plan. Um, a number of staff met Friday afternoon with Ms. Gottesman, Ms. Wood representing PTA Council, Mr. Smoller, and our new executive director, Dr. Parrish, um, looked at the project plan, and I spent some time with the program directors working on the teaching and learning piece this morning. Um, before the board meeting tonight, I, I went through that. There's a lot of things in there that need to be cleaned up. It's, it's got a lot of questions in it, and a lot of that is repetitive. So we'll be working with the, um, the committee on both the project plan and the survey results in order to go forward. And again, with that, um, we're waiting to get some sense from the state, a little bit more guidance on what their parameters are gonna be, and we'll be holding, um, uh, more conversation with this, with the community and our teachers, um, during the summer. We're gonna communicate throughout the summer to everybody. Our staff will start to coming back on July 6th, 7th, and then the subsequent weeks to work on instructional model plans as well as curriculum adjustments. So we hope to have all that done by the end of July so we can begin the implementation. So that's really it.
Mr. Rifa?
Yeah, I have two things. Um, Mike, uh, we, you, you mentioned these forums, these small group forums with parents, uh, and I think those are definitely important. And I just wanted to say, have some clarification, is, is some of the tone on that gonna be about parent feedback on distance learning and how it went and what they're looking for?
Yeah, I, I, I mentioned parent forums in two different contexts. One was the, is the issues that I've been contacting with parents who wanna have further conversations about race. So there's that issue. And then, then also, I think, um, having conversations with parents around distance learning. I think one of the things I like to do is I like to turn those conversations into, um, our distance learning or, but the hybrid model, I'd like to turn those into, um, feedback on projections of ideas that we're looking at implementing in the fall, to get parent feedback to help shift those and make those stronger.
Okay, so thank you for that clarification. The only thing I would urge is that we do those forums sooner than later, because if the work to determine what we're gonna be doing in the fall is gonna be mostly happening starting the end of July, um, I think it's important to get those forums done, you know, sooner, or the feedback sooner than later. And then lastly, um, we talked about reentry. Um, has there been any talk, um, at the state level or at the town level about, um, the possibility of a future date of resuming in-person meetings? I, I do love, um, being able to have a meeting at home, and, uh, but I do understand the structure and the need for the public to wanna get involved. And I know there are guidelines on numbers of people, but any talk, um, that you've heard in town on that yet?
No, I, I would tell you, just based even on the state guidance and the reopening, my hope is that when we, for instance, when the administrators come back together in July, I'm hoping that we can take advantage of one of our larger instructional spaces and follow the appropriate social distancing guidelines and actually have those meetings in, in person together. Um, I think we're gonna have a stronger meeting, but also we've gotta put ourselves in the position of, right, of staffing kids and kind of coming back together and dealing with some of the awkwardness that that's gonna entail, uh, when it starts. So my hope is, you know, that will be a good time to, to, um, begin those conversations in person together, to, in order to go forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jacobson?
Um, I'm Jen Jacobson, um, just following up on Mr. Cummings. I know that, I mean, there are, you know, throughout our nation, nice dates so far that have already...
Yeah, 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 we got, we got an electric pivot Aquaman going again. Maybe move your phone away from the computer?
My phone isn't near the computer. No? Oh, my God, you can't hear me?
We, I think you commented on the floor, which, you know, I still don't know if I should be making it again.
We, same comment from before, which, you know, I don't know if I should be making it again. Forget it. I'll follow up. Right, that was good. You can hear me?
Yeah, that was.
That was good. Maybe I need to come closer. Um, okay, sorry. So what I was saying is that, um, many states have already put out their fall guidelines. Um, and Connecticut, it seems, is not going to be doing so until early July, which is, you know, about a month from now. So just so the public is clear, you're still moving forward with planning now. We're not actually waiting for the state to give us guidelines, right?
That is correct. I mean, I think we can refine those guidelines or refine our, um, when we have those guidelines. But we're, you know, we can take the summer guidelines or summer school guidelines right now as a starting point. We can work with those.
Okay, and then you tweak as things come out. But just, just to make it clear, we're not waiting for July. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cunningham?
Can I ask something quickly?
Yes, you can, Mr. Peterson.
Hi, Jeff Peterson, again, sorry for the, sorry for the new video. Um, uh, Mike, I, I asked you this, uh, over the weekend, just, I want to see if you had any update on it. I, I think I know what the answer is, but I have to ask it anyway. Any, any, uh, leeway on letting, uh, parks and rec groups use space inside of our buildings? They have some specific programs in mind that I think would be very valuable for our community, but they have historically used interior spaces in our district. And you, you mentioned you might have Angeles look at that.
Yeah, I, I asked Mr. Popovich to look into that, excuse me, with, um, Mr. Calabrese. So, Mr. Popovich, can you give a report back on what you learned?
Yep, so we are allowing parks and rec to use three of our buildings over the summer for programs that they're offering. Um, I know there was some question brought up about a, I believe it's an acting group that would like to come in. And, um, I had a conversation today with Mr., with, uh, Anthony. And, um, it's, that is his program, and at this point, he is the one choosing not to move forwards with it. He doesn't see a way it would actually be able to meet with the group size that it does and still be able to meet the guidelines of the OEC. So that is why he has chosen at this point not to move forwards with that group.
So, but you're saying that there, there's no objection from, from the school district to use it?
As long as he can handle it and meet the, the requirements of the OEC memo 18, which is what he is working off of, then we wouldn't object to it at this time.
All right, well, I have another call to make. Thanks very much.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, committee liaison reports? Mrs. Gerber?
Um, so, uh, Mill Hill, uh, Building Committee, uh, the, the, last time we met, they had canceled their meeting for the next day. Uh, I just got word today that they've canceled tomorrow's meeting because they don't have any outstanding business. Uh, but I did just want to give everyone a heads up that the, um, bids are going to be opened the first week in July. So, uh, once I have more information about that, um, I will share it with you guys. But for now, they're not meeting tomorrow. And my understanding is the next time there will be anything going on will be when the bids are opened, unless there are any invoices or anything they need to approve at their second meeting in, um, June. And if that's the case, I'll give you guys the update at our next meeting.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Mrs. Le, Ms. Leeper?
Just want to, just want for the public to say that our, um, Finance Committee meeting was primarily addressed already in terms of the MOU and the proposed, um, budget cut items for the non-op次 accounts. And so there's really no other updates.
Thank you. Um, the Board of Health met last night, um, as you expect. They have been pretty much consumed with COVID-19. Um, from a budget standpoint, you may recall, there was a request for additional nurses at Stratfield Elementary School. That request was approved, um, which is good news. And, you know, they are just working, um, with the school district to help us, you know, make, have plans in place to safely reopen. Any questions? Seeing none? Comment?
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, um, I just wanted to say congratulations to all our schools and families and graduates who are having their moving up ceremonies this week. And I hope they really enjoy their parades and special ends of their day. And just thank you to the staff and everyone who's working so hard to make these days special for them as well. And then also a shout out and congratulations to our senior athletes who had signing day today in a very safe and social distancing way. Much appreciated on staff and everyone who was able to make that happen as well. So just wanted to put those out there for everyone and say congratulations.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Maxwell Caneli?
Um, so this is out of left field. Um, I hadn't thought of it before, and I, if there were more meetings, I wouldn't be doing this now, but we don't have much time. But this is, um, getting back to something Mrs. Leeper asked at the beginning of the, or, uh, back earlier in the meeting. And so I want to throw it out to the board. Um, and that's the idea of giving the state this feedback. And I was wondering if I can use open board comment to get just a sense of the body of if they would be in any way supportive. I'd be happy to partner with, um, uh, Jen Leeper on writing a letter that could be sent from the board, both to CAVE and to the state, outlining just exactly how challenging operationalizing their requirements were. Um, I think there's been a lot of feedback on this, but I guess I, I don't like the feeling of assuming that they know. I mean, I'm sure they're getting it in varying ways. And I wouldn't want to do a letter that doesn't get run, you know, past staff to make sure our facts are correct. But I just thought, uh, Mrs. Leeper's point was really well-taken. Summer school, the summer school we had wanted could not happen due to very specific rules. And I'm not saying that the rules are not well-intended, are not, and some of them undoubtedly necessary. But I don't know that they all are. I don't know how well prioritized they are in terms of what each was meant to achieve. And making sure the state really realizes what, how it hamstrung districts. And if that was their intent, then why did they allow in-person summer school to begin with? And if it was not their intent to hamstring districts, then they need to know exactly what operationalizing their rules look like. Um, and so I'm just tossing out there to the board again, Ms. Leeper, I'm kind of assuming you'd partner with me on it. Um, but I'm just curious for any board feedback. If, and all I'm, all I'm asking for right now is a, we'd be kind of interested, and then it's up to us to produce a letter, which anyone is welcome to say, I find this objectionable and not vote for. But I just wanted to jump on that earlier point and see what anybody thinks.
This is a, not a, um, an easy topic to, um, address during open board comment. Um, I think it's multifaceted. I will, I'm not shutting it down, but I don't think that we really should be discussing it right now. I would ask the board to, please send me your thoughts on it. Um, a lot of it is how to public, public health as well. It's not just the Department of Education acting alone. Um, I will share that CAVE has been advocating and sharing information with the state about how difficult this is. A lot of these guidelines and restrictions in terms of if the goal is to get students physically back in buildings, it is extremely challenging, especially since funding is not coming with a lot of these, these goals. Uh, and that feedback has been communicated by board chairs to CAVE, who, you know, are on many different planning committees at the state level. Um, so I don't want you to think that our voice is totally not heard as supportive of education. Uh, because it is, could it be stronger? Absolutely. So, um, I just invite the board to send their feedback on that. I don't want to get into a discussion because I'm just afraid it's, it's not going to be a too many. And I don't think it's really doing due diligence to get a sense of the body without having a real discussion on it. And I don't want to send you and Mrs. Leeper down a path that potentially could lead nowhere or additional state guidance could be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks or federal money, um, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, which could change the conversation.
And, and just follow up, thank you, Ms. Leeper. I really was just looking for a vehicle or a, a path to go. So I completely agree. If, if, if my fellow board members could give, um, Christine feedback, thumbs up, thumbs down, kind of interesting, and take it from there, um, I appreciate. I was just looking for a way to do it. Um, I was not looking to start an hour-long conversation. Now, I completely recognize that's not appropriate. But I, the idea hadn't occurred to me until Mrs. Leeper said it earlier. So, thank you very much.
Um, Ms. Jacobson, being your legislative liaison, I saw your hand up. Do you have a comment to make on that?
Yeah, so I know you don't want to talk about it, so I'll just throw in my two cents. That was the comment that I was going to bring up when I, no one could hear me with the feedback. And then also, there's possibly going to be a special session. So if there's anything that we should be thinking about through our state delegation, I would encourage us to incorporate those pieces into that now.
Thank you. And if we need to meet prior to our next scheduled meeting, we can do that, um, to address this issue. Any other open board comment? Seeing none, I want you, I'm, I'm going to make one. Um, I don't know about anybody else, but these last two weeks since we last met, it, it seems that the world has shifted somewhat in the conversations that we've been having. Um, and it's been, it's been an odd feeling because in some ways, it's been good news. Things are starting to reopen, people are starting to connect. And on the other side of it, we have people protesting worldwide, um, in the name of fighting against racial injustice. Um, here in Fairfield, I think that we're very lucky that the protest has been peaceful. They were student-led, and our town government and police department, um, you know, recognizes some of the injustices and is working with our community. I know that the first left one, I believe, is having a, a discussion about this later in the week. Um, and as a board, I, I mean, as a board chair, I struggled over the last week in terms of whether or not we should be making a statement. I didn't personally make a, a statement because I didn't want my words to be speaking for you. And it was difficult for us to, um, put a united statement out. I appreciate the work that the, that Mike has done over the last week on this issue in the midst of, you know, an MOU and a budget and a reentry and all the other work that's being done. And I, um, I thank you for both correspondences that went out to the community last week and committed to supporting the school district's efforts in having these very difficult conversations. It is our mission to, to serve all students, um, to be responsible citizens, and to help them, you know, succeed in an ever-changing global economy. And I think as a public school system, a lot of responsibility falls on us. Um, and I think we're all up to the challenge. So, thank you, and look forward to the work ahead. Um, anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Public comment once again, if any members of the public, if you have any comments on these agenda items, I invite you and encourage you, please, send them to the public comment email address or fill out the form on the board website. We are all looking forward to the time where we can welcome you back to our meetings in person. And with that, um, motion to adjourn. Ms. Leeper, seconded by Mrs. Gerber, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, nine zero, we are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.